Mr. Lou, Ms. Gerber, Ms. Iacono, Mr. Dwyer. I expect Mr. Fadabean and Mr. Carey shortly, and Mrs. Brand. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for September 11th, 2012. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 11th, 2012. Moved by Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Brand. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Next item, student and committee liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to report this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is the superintendent's report. And the first item is the quarterly financial update. I'll turn that over to you, Dr. Tittle and your staff.
Mrs. Munsell is working her way up here. You actually have two reports. We included, as we said we would in June, the final figures on the previous fiscal year, as well as the first quarter of this fiscal year. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Munsell.
Okay. Well, we can finally put 11-12 fiscal year to rest. What I did was, besides the memo I gave you, the, I just updated the last spreadsheet that you had received with the transfers that you approved in June with the balances that we expected, we gave you in July, and then gave you what the final balances were, which were very close. There was one final transfer necessary because of the, some purchasing that we did between school and support expenses. But the final balance that we returned to the town was $350,000 and change, and we had, that's what we said we were going to do, and that's what we ended up doing. Moving on to this year's, this first quarterly report is, I'll say again, is very preliminary. There, I won't take you through the format that I did last year, it's the same thing, explaining each category, I'll just give you an overview. Basically, the percentage used, which is mainly because of the encumbrances, is 90% already. There's quite a few qualifiers with that. One of, one of them being that Osborne Hill expenses are included in these numbers, and that was obviously unbudgeted. So $461,000 of what we're showing expended at encumbered or encumbered is due to Osborne Hill. There's other items in there like utilities and general maintenance that aren't yet encumbered. Part-time salaries for subs and activity salaries, that kind of thing. So there's, it's still going to be ins and outs here throughout the year. Personnel, which is 68% of our budget, is the largest, the largest balance there is for part-time salaries, which are subs, overtime, that kind of thing that we don't encumber. Winter and spring sports aren't done yet. The FTE count is, it's changed already since I went to print, so I don't know that we, I think we need to wait till the dust settles on that, I'm not sure that that's happened Fixed charges, a difference here from the report that you received last year, this time, we've already made the payment to the health insurance fund, which is over $16 million, and we've made our initial pension payment, which is why that's drawn down quite a bit. Social Security and life insurance, we pay as we go along, so those aren't encumbered, that's the largest balances there. Pupil personnel, always volatile. We won't know until at least the end of the third quarter how we're, how we're going to stand there.
Thank you.
Right now, we're showing a negative balance, but that's because we haven't received any excess cost reimbursement, which is over $2 million, expected to be $2 million, over $2 million. School expenses and support expenses are all the supplies, instructional kind of materials, either purchased at the school level or supported by central office. Maintenance, operation, and transportation, the category that's called maintenance services is where the $461,000 for Osborne Hill is. Student transportation is regular, both regular and special ed, have been encumbered, but there's no, we haven't calculated yet the offset for non-public transportation that will get reimbursed from the town for, because John's still going through the routes and figuring out what portion of them are non-public. In that category, there's about 160,000 of excess cost reimbursement that is for transportation that gets categorized there, and there's also some small, reasonable transportation grant offset there. Capital, the, there's about $308,000 left balance in the technology category, and that's mainly for K-8 wireless project that we put on hold when Osborne Hill started, costs started to escalate. We just kind of put that on hold until we knew where that's, where we're going to end up with that. That's a general overview, and like I said, it's very preliminary, so I don't know if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, Mrs. Brand and Mr. Dwyer?
A couple. When I looked at the number for how we closed out the school year, that we had zeroed out the money in the health insurance account, so we had a balance, it was zero, when I looked at that?
No.
Because I know there was some talk about increases and they were concerned, so I was looking to see, when I looked at the 2011, 2000, here, I'll actually go to the page, so we're both talking about the same thing. It's on page one of three with the 2011, 2012.
Mm-hmm.
With fixed charges, health insurance, we used all of it, 100%. So, and where I see outstanding or unencumbered, it doesn't have anything?
Yeah, there, this is our, these are our general fund accounts. The town funds our total budget, this year it was $148 million, last year it was $145. That $16 million was part of our budget for health insurance. We take that $16 million and deposit it into the medical trust fund, so this does zero out, but the medical trust fund, where it's deposited and the claims are drawn from, is where we end up with a balance. We wouldn't ever end up with a balance here.
Okay, and I guess the same kind of question I have relative to this year, where we are currently, we have paid it, but we have a unencumbered balance of $2,250,000?
No.
Am I misreading this?
No, it should be 20,000.
On page one of three for the 2012, 2013?
It should be 2200.
Two thousand, 250.
Oh, 2,000, excuse me, I beg your pardon. Yeah, that would make a big difference.
Yeah.
Zero here or there.
2250. That's for stipends that don't go into the medical trust fund, they're paid to individuals for not taking insurance.
I guess what I was asking is, the one and a half then that we're carrying, sitting in the trust fund, or is it in the general fund? Because if I remember, didn't we agree to carry one and a half?
One, times the IBNR? That's in the medical trust fund.
Okay. But we don't show that here because it's not in that account? I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm...
This, these are our general fund accounts, the medical trust fund is a separate fund, it's a...
Oh, it's not reflected in here, is what you're telling me?
Not reflected here.
Oh, so you're telling me with the health insurance, what we're seeing is going in and what's going out, but it isn't reflected of what's actually in the trust fund?
The money that's here...
It's a general account.
Yeah, the money that's here in the general fund goes into the medical trust fund.
Okay, thank you. The only other question I had when I looked at, it's page one for the 2012, 2013, is in personnel services, we have a lot of shifting. I counted, we have 12 out of the 17, what we appropriated, and then we had a lot of transfers in there. So through the chair, I think to Dr. Tittle or Ms. Munsell, I'm not sure which, I just wanted to understand why we had so many changes, there were a lot.
I'm sorry, 12 of 17, what?
The 2012, 2013 budget, page one, and if you look at personnel services, and it starts with teaching staff, certified support staff, going down the line, we have appropriated as adopted, then special appropriation and transfers. And there, there are a lot in there where we have a lot of transfers, and I just wanted to understand why we had so many.
When there's, the wage and benefit reserve is where we budget for unsettled contracts, that kind of thing, and as, as salaries become known, we make transfers into the appropriate category.
I guess, because we saw a lot of, taking out of a lot of other accounts, and then it's now in line 133, staff replacement, where there's an increase. I just, I just want to understand what they were, it's a change, and there must be a reason for it, I just was wondering what it was. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I thought it was going to, I really didn't think this was going to be hard when I, yeah.
It's very, it was very foreign to me, too, the way it's budgeted, and it's just lumped together in between the wage and benefit reserve, the staff replacement, the degree changes, and as, as people in whatever category they fall into, either earn that degree or become replaced, the money is shifted from one place to another.
You know what, maybe what would be best is if, if you get more time and you want to email me with an answer, where you think, that'd be fine.
Sure.
Listen, thank you.
So, just as a follow-up, you keep the money in one account and then you transfer it into the appropriate line as, as it's used?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Dwyer?
The estimate at the moment is over $700,000 for Osborne Hill, but I want to make sure I understand, that is exclusive of the costs of the gymnasium?
Correct.
And if you, you must have an estimate for the cost of the gymnasium, if you added that in, what's your overall estimate, including the gymnasium?
I don't think we...
We don't have an estimate for the gymnasium yet.
Okay.
That's not in the picture right now, we haven't gotten that far. So that is likely to go into the funding request when we do the window replacement as part of the larger funding. These are expenses associated with the rest of the school. The only part that is in the, is part of this, is that there was, there is some additional testing we have to do in the gymnasium in order to come up with the plan to remediate it, and those costs are included in here. But the gymnasium is going to be a longer-term project, and so there's no cost associated with the gymnasium, other than the testing.
Let, let me just clarify, this, it does include cost for the temporary gymnasium, but not...
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to clarify, it includes the cost, the $700,000 includes the cost of the temporary gymnasium.
Yes.
Right, but not remedied.
And some of the testing of the gymnasium, but the remediation of the gymnasium is still an unknown number.
Correct.
Exactly. Good, good clarification.
Mr. Lou?
I just, thank you, I just have a follow-up and, on Mrs. Brand's comment and what you had just said, Mrs. Munsell, you said you didn't know that this was foreign to you, too. Is that because it's new to you this year, or, or is it not the way you're used to doing? I'm not trying to put you on the spot here.
Yeah, just not, it's not used, I wasn't used to doing it this way.
This way, is there another way that, it, I mean, would you be doing it...
No, actually, it kind, it does kind of make sense, it just, it's just not easily explainable.
So, I guess then we can get explained for the next time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Two questions. Last meeting I asked for some follow-up information on what was bonded and what wasn't bonded on the capital projects.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That was distributed.
Okay.
In a Friday packet.
It is in there, okay, then I missed it.
It colored, it was colored.
Okay. I missed it, so I'll, I'll find that.
I didn't hear the question.
If this is confusing to you as a CFO, imagine how confusing it is to us. So I guess, you know, I'll, I'll follow up with an email along with Board Member Brand for some explanation. My question is, if our population, school population is approximately where we anticipated to be in sometime, in some cases lower, where were the additional FTEs placed? And you can get back to me with specifics on that, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Carey?
Ms. Munsell, I'm going to take a stab at trying to elaborate on what your explanation was, and if I go off the tracks, let me know. If we are negotiating a contract with our teachers, for example, that's going to be the conclusion of which will be in, I think it was in September or not, or October, but our budget is being set prior to July 1st. What happens is, is we don't have the exact number for what we're going to pay our teachers, just using that one bargaining unit as an example. So, they have a wage benefit reserve, which is a pile of money that's put aside, that shows that we're bargaining in good faith, and it's money that we can move over once we determine the exact pay scale for our teachers. There's all kinds of bars and levers that are moving simultaneously as well, but what happens is that our teachers might show up in a new degree this year, which changes their step or their pay scale. So, when we do a budget, it's kind of a best-case guesstimate of where we're going to be, especially when we're negotiating with different bargaining units, and then the wage reserve allows us to backfill that reality once the board agrees on a labor agreement with a bargaining unit. And that money starts getting moved around in these piles, which is why you see big transfers, because we have to even that out after the fact that we've made the budget. Is that close, Ms. Munsell?
Yeah, it's part of it, yep.
Thank you. Mr. Lou?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Carey. I guess, I think what, were you responding directly to the page one of three on the 2012-13 with the transfers of the personal services? I guess, I think the question that Mrs. Brand was, was trying to say is not so much how it's done, but why were there so many transfers? I think that was why, if I'm wrong, Mrs. Brand, you could, you know...
Is that the bottom line?
No, actually, there was just a lot of movement, and we do keep a wage benefit reserve, to Mr. Carey's point, when we are in negotiations, such as, we have to, it's good faith. That made perfect sense to me, I understood that. But we had a lot of lines that the board's appropriated, line by line, as a board, and then I saw a lot of movement, and it just seemed a lot, given the number, and I just wanted an explanation as to why I'm, you know, that was it.
Okay. Does everybody feel comfortable, or do they want a more written description from Mrs. Munsell? Mr. Fadabean?
I was moving on to a different issue, so I'll wait till you're...
Okay. Are we good now? Okay. All right, Mr. Fadabean?
This is not, I guess, it's another issue, not another issue, it goes back to the remediation cost for Osborne Hill, and it seems to be my understanding from this document, the estimated cost is in the neighborhood of $700,000. It has to be addressed in some way. And I believe it was mentioned that the remediation cost for the existing gymnasium is anticipated to be rolled into a bonding request for the windows replacement at the same time, is that correct?
Right.
All right, so my question would be then, do you have any understanding or expectation as to the current $700,000 would come from, and whether that would be, have to be, or is there a possibility of bonding a portion of that, or is a portion of that going to have to be utilized from the operating budget?
Well, let me first talk about the $700,000 figure, because I don't want people thinking, that's the end. That is the current expectation. The final figure on Osborne Hill was likely to be higher than that. So we still don't know what the end on the current year expenses for Osborne Hill are. The current number is 700,000, but that number is likely to go up, and it all depends on how successful we are with some of the cleaning efforts we're doing. If they work, then that number will be reasonably close. If we have to go back in and do more work, the number could go even higher. So that all being said, it's a large number, and not one we can easily handle or handle at all within the operating budget, and so...
We are currently in discussion with the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and other town bodies on how that will be paid. I, I gave an update at the last meeting and said that I had been to the Board of Finance meeting and said it was highly likely that we would be back asking for a special appropriation. How the town, if the town so chooses to do that, how they decide to do that is up to them. It wouldn't be our choice to decide whether it's bonded, whether they take it out of the general fund, whether they take it out of another account, or whether they tell us that we have to take it out of our account. It hasn't been decided.
So we don't know where the money's...
Currently, we, currently, we're paying for it out of our operating budget, but as I mentioned to the Board of Finance, I said it was highly likely the number was going to continue to escalate, and that we would probably be back to ask for a special appropriation.
I understand that.
Mrs. Brand?
I, I see this as part of the dilemma, is we don't know where we're going to land.
Yes.
So you can't ask for money when you don't know how much you're asking for. Unless they can give us an estimate at some point in time, do we have any kind of timeline of when we think we'll have a good idea and handle on this?
I think we're going to have to land on a, on an estimate in the next month or two, because in, in order to, we need to know whether the town is going to seriously entertain this or not, and we can't wait till June to get that answer. So, at this point, I'd be thinking that we would come back with as firm a figure as we could for the board at the November board meeting, and present that, and perhaps at that time, ask you to make a request to the town bodies. I think it should come from the full board, not just from me. And we'll put together an estimate at that point, and if the board's comfortable with the figures, then we can proceed. If the board's not comfortable, if the board wants to wait, you know, we can wait. But that would be probably the first opportunity, would be the November 27th meeting.
And just so the board knows, along the same lines, Dr. Tittle and I will be back before the Board of Finance on October 23rd to tell them where we are to date with expenditures, yes. So we're briefing them as they go along, the intention obviously is not to surprise them with some huge number at the end.
Mrs. Cannelli?
With regard to our 2012-2013 budget, according to this, are we basically going to simply hold on the K-8 wireless and devote that 307 to that 700, the current 700,000 estimate? So right now, that leaves us with, you know, approximately 400,000 where we're pulling from, but are there other aspects of our 2012-2013 budget that you've already pinpointed as it was allocated to this, but now we can hold on it?
No. No, that's it, and, you know, I really don't even want to hold back on the wireless, all that does is push it off into the next year's budget. We, we made a commitment to, to that project as part of technology, and it was just the one thing we could just sort of hold for the time being, till we know where we, where we stand, but I don't want to subtract that from our request and ask for the net, because all that's going to do is dig a hole in next year's budget and postpone even more technology. So, that's just something we've done as a prudent step, but we would still like to do that project, and the sooner we can get going on it, the better for everybody.
Mr. Convertito?
Just along the same lines on, on the wireless system, how long do we put it off until, until it becomes sort of fruitless to benefit us this year?
I think whenever we can get it done, we, we really need it, we've got some, we've got some obligations that we have. In fact, we have even in some, in some student IEPs, access to wireless is part of what we need to do. So, it's fruitful as soon as we can get, you know, get going on it. It's not something that takes like nine months to do. It was, it was put out to bid, or, you know, so we have, you know, bids in and they're ready to go, so all the legwork's been done on it.
Okay.
It's just that, I just had to put the brakes on it because of this, this emergency we had.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Munsell. October enrollment.
Okay, your pink sheet is in your board packet. I'm going to point out a couple of the highlights. One is that the kindergarten enrollment is significantly below previous kindergarten enrollments. It's the lowest kindergarten enrollment in quite some time. We had projected 775 students in kindergarten and 683 are enrolled. It didn't hit all schools equally. The schools with what I would say are significant differences from what the projections were, were Jennings, Mill Hill, North Stratfield, Osborne Hill, and Stratfield. Holland Hill actually saw an increase in its kindergarten over the projections. Again, it, no one has an explanation for this, this is just, don't ask me why. We did see a bump up in first grade. First grade does usually go up somewhat from the kindergarten number in the previous year, but this year it went up quite a bit. We had projected 815 students in first grade, and 842 are enrolled. So we saw a large influx of kids who were kindergarten students elsewhere and are first grade with us. The two schools that had the largest uptick in that area, that contributed the most to that, were Dwight and Mill Hill. All the others were fairly close. There wasn't a whole lot of movement in any of the other grades or in any of the other schools. The, so the net effect on the K to five enrollment is that we're about 81 students lower than we projected, and almost all of that is attributable to kindergarten. That's pretty much how the elementary shook out. Now, depending on where kids move around, and as kids move in and kids move out, it, it sometimes doesn't affect you the way you might, might think, and so you could have a decline in enrollment somewhere, but it doesn't decline enough to remove a teacher. And then a few more kids move into a first grade, and all of a sudden that kicks up, ups up to another teacher, so didn't exactly work out in our favor. At the middle school level, we're almost exactly on the number, we're off by one. 2,535 enrolled, 2,536 were anticipated. We're pretty good there, and all three of the schools were approximately what we thought they would be. So no big surprises at the middle school level. Those remain, you know, our biggest classes. The single largest class in the district is the current year sixth grade, 858 students, followed up closely by the seventh grade, 853 students, marching inexorably towards our high schools. At the high school level, the enrollment did go up over the prior year, but it did not go up as much as we thought it was going to go up. And probably one of the more interesting quirks, and again, we haven't had time to research, you know, why, we will look at this with the guidance folks about, you know, who went where and why, but Fairfield Ward's ninth grade is 15 students larger than Fairfield Ludlow's ninth grade. And if you look on the chart, you'll see that that doesn't usually happen. 11th grade's fairly close. So we're slightly down at the high school level, about 40 kids, but still up over the prior year, and we're 2,968 high school kids, closing in on 3,000. prior year, and we're 2,968 high school kids, closing in on 3,000. So overall, we're about 117 students lower than projected, 14 students lower than the prior October 1st. We have sent this information to our enrollment projector firm, enrollment projection firm, and they will be producing revised enrollment projections for next year on which we can base our budget and planning. Should be getting those in a couple of weeks, and we'll be able to be off to the races. So that's pretty much the highlights of the enrollment.
Mrs. Cannelli?
Just one quick question. I'm sure the former Facilities Committee especially could correct me if I'm wrong. Ludlow is supposed to, has a higher capacity than Woods, correct? With the completed Woods? Is that correct?
Eight seventy-five versus eight forty, if I recall correctly.
That Ludlow eight seventy-five, Woods eight forty?
Correct.
And then, so my question is, is it of any concern to you that the sixth grade at Woods and Ludlow is decidedly skewed the other way?
Well, the Ludlow total, being at nine forty, is up there. So it actually helps us, yeah.
Right, no, I know that it's still, I mean, they're both packed to the gills. I'm just talking about in terms of a trend, what you're seeing in that sixth grade.
Yeah. No, at this point, we're okay. I think every year at the middle school level, it's going to be a balancing act. The one thing that we have going for us is if you look back at the fifth grade, current year fifth grade, that number is 766. And so the middle school is going to get a little bit of a breather as 824 eighth graders leave and 766 sixth graders enter, or some approximation of that. So I think if we make it through this year at the middle schools, we'll be all right into the foreseeable future. But it's tight, you're right.
Okay. Thank you. Update on teacher and administrator evaluation plans?
Yeah, I could thank Phil for this handout from Shipman and Goodwin, because I was sort of looking for a reasonably comprehensive but not overly technical description of the new teacher evaluation plan. This handout covers certification, evaluation, and tenure. I just want to pick out a few of the highlights on the evaluation front because this is going to have a significant impact on the school system, particularly if the state holds to its plan to have every school system fully implement the teacher and administrator evaluation plan in the fall of 2013. And I want to point out a couple of places where this is potentially going to impact us and potentially will impact the budget, although it's really hard to predict. So I just want to point out a couple of the highlights. On page two, the middle of the page, it's B, teacher evaluation. That's kind of where it all starts, and it's all from a public act that was then further elucidated by the State Board of Education adopting guidelines, although they're not guidelines, they're mandates. They used to be called guidelines, they're now called core requirements. And just as an example of something that's new, it's not really a budget issue, is number one, every teacher and every administrator will be rated and put into four categories. And you can see the categories there, exemplary, proficient, developing, and below standard. It's a very sort of complex way of determining who goes into what bucket, but under the current system, you know, you're either satisfactory or you're in need of improvement. And this is going to cause us to categorize each certified employee into one of those categories. And as you can see, there's a lot of factors that go into that. If you flip over to number 10, they are going to audit the evaluation ratings of what we do, and part of this will be that we will need to upload a humongous amount of data to the state about our teachers and our principals in their evaluation. The guidelines down below indicate the various percentages that each teacher, and by the way, it's very similar for principals, for administrators. It's not just principals, this is everybody except the superintendent. I have my own category. So 45% of a teacher's evaluation is based on student growth. What's not in there, and what was probably the most controversial of the whole thing, is that where available, half of that will be, teacher will be judged on standardized test scores. So that's the magic 22 and a half percent. Where there isn't any standardized test score available, then all 45% will be judged using some other measure of student growth that we would have to identify based on the teacher. And then 40% on observation, and then there's some choices to make about the other 5 and 10%, either whole school learning indicators or student feedback, that's a choice, or parent or peer feedback, and that's a choice. And so you can see that it's a very complicated formula, and each teacher and each principal has to be rated on each of those areas, and then all those ratings have to be aggregated, and then they're placed into one of the four categories. So you can begin to see the complexity of this thing is going to be, you know, massive. They are piloting it right now in 10 districts, and so we're hoping to get some better ideas of what to, what it's going to take to pull this off. So some of the duties that we have to perform, for example, is there are a minimum number of observations of teachers that are required under the core requirements. They're not negotiable, and that is that principals will need to do at least three observations of teachers, all teachers, not tenured versus non-tenured, there's different rules, and it is a major time commitment to get that done. How those are going to get done, who's going to do those, who's got the time to do them, that's a serious concern of mine at this point. The second thing is all this data has to be aggregated, it has to be put into a system and uploaded to the state by June 30th every year. That's over on page six. This will involve software, which at this point, it looks like we'll need to buy. So there's piloting some software now, but it's not something you can really do on pen and paper because what they're having, what they're going to have is, there could be 25 or 30 ratings that go into a teacher's score, and you have to put in each teacher's rating on each of those and upload that, and then they will look at patterns in the data across the whole state on this. So that's going to be a burden. So I believe we're going to incur some software costs and some training costs on how to use the software. We're going to incur a lot of time and personnel to conduct the evaluations, and we are required under the second, a little white circle there, training all evaluators and providing an orientation for teachers on the support program that we develop. The training of the evaluators alone that's going on in the pilot districts is estimated to be $30,000 to $40,000, and that's for sort of a medium-sized district because you can't just make up your own evaluation plan. You really have to use something that's been developed and vetted through the state process, unless you've really got something fantastic. And so I believe we are going to be incurring software costs, training costs, and personnel costs, the exact extent to which I don't know. And when you ask the state, how are we going to get all this done? How are the principals going to find time to do this, as an example? Their response is something like, well, you'll have to, you know, give some of the work of the principals to somebody else. I'm thinking, well, okay, but who's paying the somebody else? Well, you can use other people to do evaluations other than principals. Well, who is that and who's paying them? We know it's not the state paying them. So there's a lot of unanswered questions about this. It's coming. There is a move afoot to try to push this off by a year, considering the pilots have just started at the state, and the results of the pilots aren't due till January of 2014. So I'm, we will be working on it. We're putting a committee together of teachers and administrators to work through this and be ready to go, but you just know this is, this is out there, this is coming, and I don't know that I'm going to have, you know, a good handle on the exact impact on the system by the time we do the budget, but it looks like it's a significant burden to do it. I will say, by the way, that conceptually, and I've been blogging about this, so I've gotten it out of my system, so I'll stop venting soon, but conceptually, making improvements to our teacher and administrative evaluation plan make a lot of sense. It's, you know, we're trying to correct deficiencies in these systems that have existed for 30 and 40 years. Just trying to do it in six months is a little aggressive. So at this point, that's what I know about it. We continue to go to workshops, the state continues to give us information. To be continued. Just to keep you up to speed on this.
Dr. Title, can you, can I ask that you track the cost of this? Set up some type of system so that when we get asked the question, what did it cost to do this lovely unfunded mandate, because that's what it is, is? And if there's a way to track the percentage of the time spent by your staff so that we can really report back as to the impact on this? And I think this is something too, that the governor set up a task force, how do we get out of the way of education? Maybe we can give that type of feedback too. And then my last commentary is, do you happen to know Cabe and Capps' position on this? Are they, are they in a lobbying position? We pay a lot of money and belong to those organizations. Are they in a lobbying position to push this off for a year? It seems to me it would make sense if you're running a pilot, you'd wait to see how the pilot works before you put it in. And good, well, I'll refrain from giving my personal commentary.
Yeah, well, I will first of all say that Cabe and Capps were both, had seats at the table when this system was developed. So, but I believe now that particularly as they see the pilot unfold, and they're really seeing it on the ground, that both the organizations, I know the superintendent's organization is, are pushing to see if there is in some way that it can't be at least, if not the whole thing, some of the elements of it pushed off a bit. There's some legal back and forth on what the true effective data this is, so there may be a loophole that they can slide through to, everybody can save face on it, but, you know, I'm all one for doing things as rapidly as possible. I don't like to just sit around, but the problem is that if you try to do this too fast, or you under-resource it, or you don't have the time to do it, it will end up being a compliance exercise, and then you won't have the outcome that you want it to have if you do it right. So I think right now, although I don't think it's necessarily being a big public thing, I think there is a push out there to try to push it off a bit until at least they can see a full year of the pilot. That's all I know.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Brand?
Related to this, the 10 pilots, they must have included some portion of their budget to allocate for this initiative?
State's paying for all the pilot costs.
But do we have a sense of what that costs? Because that might give us a ballpark figure of what this might look like.
Yeah, there is a figure, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know the pilot districts are having all of their costs paid for by the state as part of the pilot. But they've also made it pretty clear to us that, don't expect that when they roll it out to the other 156 districts.
No, I just meant in terms of a...
Total dollars.
A baseline that would give us some indication of the amount of money.
Right.
To Mrs. Iacona's point, it starts to give us a frame of what we're going to be looking at.
Right.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Cannelli?
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, regarding the software, I know with the safe school climate, the state did have a software that could have been used for free, and we, I believe it was free, but we made the determination that it was very elementary or whatever, that it was worth it to invest in better software. Is there any possibility that they would be doing something similar here, that there would at least be something that we could make use of?
Well, they are, first of all, this was a survey the state was providing to us for the school climate legislation that we, that was substandard. This, they are piloting software right now for this. If they land on one, then what they have told us is that the cost of that software are going to be passed along to us. So I believe there may end up being one or two packages the state will accept, but I don't believe they're going to pay for it or make it available to us, that, so far. I mean, that, that's something that, you know, perhaps during the legislative session as a small token of appreciation the state could do, but at this point, they're telling us to be prepared to purchase your own.
Mr. Convertito?
Other than the cost of setting up the system, and the one thing that bothered me, just on page one here, subsection A, the second bullet, after July 1st, 2016, "A qualified for a professional educator certificate, teacher must hold a master's degree in appropriate subject matter area related to the teacher's certification or endorsement." So, and you don't have to, if you know the answer now, fine, if not, you can get back to me with it. If we have a teacher who has got a master's in secondary yet and teaches math but doesn't have a master's in math, are they then required to go back and get any masters in math?
This is in the certification section, so this is not a teacher evaluation question.
Right.
Right. So if you already have your professional educator certificate, you're teaching course right now.
Okay.
And you've got the professional educator certificate, then you're good, you're in. This is for people that are new, who don't quite have their professional educator certificate yet, they will have to get a master's degree in the subject area.
If that's true, then the second bullet, what's the condition for renewal after five years? So you currently have a professional educator certificate now, and it expires June 30th, 2016.
Oh, they'll just, you can just roll them over.
You can continue to roll them over.
Right, you pay your $300 and you roll it over.
Okay, but the contractual, the contractual implications of that second bullet seem to me to be fairly substantial.
Oh, we may end up with more teachers getting master's degrees as a result of it. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's something we need to be aware of.
Right, we got a few years on that one.
And plan on that one.
That's a good pick.
The other was, if I can find it here. Oh, under, when they define exemplary and so forth.
Yes.
It would seem to me that's awesome, and I know our contract is up in what, another year?
Two.
Our teacher's contract, two years?
Two.
Okay. And not that I want to give a heads up to our people across the aisle, but it would seem to me that it would be contemplated that those that are designated, I mean, I anticipate you would see a totally different pay scale for an exemplary teacher as opposed to a satisfactory teacher.
That would have to be negotiated. That's not part of the statute, not part of the requirement. So it'd have to be negotiated.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just some flares, I see.
Mrs. Brand?
Yeah, just to clarify, I don't know, a lot of our teachers already have a requirement to get their masters anyway. I think the distinction here isn't, it's a different kind of masters. Is this above and beyond an educational master? So we're talking about two degrees? Or are they substituting one for another?
They subject matter masters.
My, but my point is, are they supposed to have two?
None, no.
Masters? Or they're changing the kind of masters that are going to be?
Changing the kind of masters.
Okay, I just want to be clear, yeah. So to Mr. Convertito's point, there may not be the budget implications.
My point is that you wouldn't have an entry-level teacher coming in without a master's working towards their masters, as we have right now. They would all be coming in at that higher level.
No, 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 you would, because the professional educator certificate, you don't get that for five or six years in.
Okay.
Yeah, so you could still come in under the other kinds of certificates with the bachelor's, but you've got to work yourself towards a, towards a, towards a full-blown master's degree in your subject area to move on to the next, to the next level. So there's still the initial educator certificate and so forth.
I'm going to move on to board goals.
All right, that, so concludes the longest superintendent's report since I've been here.
Old, but old business. Discussion approval of board educational goals. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve goals, board goals for the 2012-2013 school year. Moved by Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Carey. I just wanted to open up the discussion. There's a, you received a lot of enclosures, and I just wanted to kind of go through and summary what you did get in your packet. After following a very diplomatic process where board members individually submitted goals and then ranked all of the submissions, the following goals were ranked as the top five by the board. One, to review and revise, if necessary, the mission statement and Board of Education educational goals in the Board of Education policy manual. Two, the Board of Education will schedule, and members will attend a board training session that clearly defines board roles and responsibilities as a governing body. We will agree as a board to stay with... We will agree as a board to stay within the confines of this role and remind one another when a member's request exceeds the limits of our governance responsibility. Governance relates to oversight that defines expectations, grants authority, or verifies performance. Three, the board shall work with the superintendent as to board input into the annual budget. We should also examine and update the rollout and schedule a review time of our annual budget. And I just want to point out that two and three were scored exactly the same. I just took them off the sheet in that order. Four, the board shall establish an ad hoc committee to develop a communications plan, i.e. social media, blog, news media, surveys, focus group, community conversations, et cetera, to be reported to the board by a certain date. The goal of such plan is to enhance communications with parents, staff, community leaders, and the general and public, engage in a two-way dialogue, and build support for district goals. Five, board members will strive to improve their knowledge of Robert's rules in regards to how we are supposed to be running our board meetings using parliamentary procedure as it will help our meetings run more smoothly. Knowing that we were going to have this conversation this evening, I did take the liberty to craft these motions into adoptable motions, so I'll pass those around the table, and I have copies for the public. If, you don't have to use these, it's just, you know, a template if it's, if you find it useful. I did also just want to point out that I did add in, oh wait, I might have passed my notes. Did I pass my notes in by accident?
They're coming around the table.
Hold on, is there, are there talking points on any of those? Nope, here they are, sorry, too many papers. I did also add in some end dates on some of these, so if we do decide to adopt them, you know, I inserted some things in there. You'll see like a December date for the, the board goal, the, you know, a June date, things like that, just so we have something to work from. So, those are my recommendations. I'll give you my personal thoughts. I thought we did a really good job putting this all together. I think we have a great list of things to work from. If we're able to get through however many goals we want to decide to adopt tonight and then revisit this at a later point and pick up more goals that have come off the sheet, I think that's a great idea. You know, I think this is manageable enough that I'd be comfortable, depending on the intention of the rest of the board, to adopt all five, and we can flush them out. You know, it's, it's up to the board. And with that, I'll leave it for board discussion. Mr. Convertito.
Just a, a point of order. The motion on the table is that the Board of Education approve board goals for 2012-13 school year enclosure five, six, seven, and eight.
Correct.
It seems to me the motion is all-inclusive, and if that's the case, and I would, if that is the, the motion, as I read it, then I would move to divide the question.
We can do that, or we can simply amend it? We can, we can make separate amendments as we go along? If you want to divide it, if you want to put forth that motion and separate it out and take them each one by one, or we can do it collectively?
I would move to divide the question.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion? Mrs. Cannelli? Oh, you were just seconding it. Okay, so we'll take each goal individually. Is there any discussion on the first goal? Mrs. Brand?
Yeah, actually, there was something I wanted to, I think a lot of board members have already looked at, the educational goals. They're rather comprehensive. They are the crux, in my opinion, of what this board does, and they also happen to be very timely in that the educational goals are what the teacher evaluations, their professional development are based on. So what we decide with, in conjunction with the parents and the community here, will actually have a fallout all the way through in terms of the district, as to what happens with all of the teacher evaluations, what we think and deem important. Again, with parents, it is a community effort in this, so I think it might be worthwhile if we're going to approach it to probably do it as soon and move it with community members as soon as possible, because we're going to have a time element here, particularly in view of the teacher evaluations that we might want to get moving on it. Thank you.
Mr. Convertito.
My question is, is the education, and not to speak for the chair of the policy committee, but as a member of it, educational goals are listed in the policy guide, therefore the policy committee would have to take this up. And our agenda with the state mandates coming down, and what we have to change in the policy manual seem to be quite extensive at this point in time, and my, my question is, is there an alternative to sending this to the policy committee under our bylaws, or is it mandated that it go back to the policy committee?
That's a good question, and I actually thought the same thing, and because it is a policy, I would think that that, and that is our standing committee that reviews policy, I would think that at first at least needs to go to policy for a recommendation on how it is then rolled out, whether it's establishing a committee to do, get community involvement, whatever, but I, I would, I interpret our bylaws for this first to at least have to go to policy for a determination.
And just as a follow-up for clarification for the policy committee, and maybe to try and get a sense of the board, would they be opposed to the policy committee setting up an ad hoc committee to take on this one issue?
So that would be up for board discussion. Mrs. Brand on Mr. Convertito's comments on that?
Yeah, actually, I, I think we're ad hoc absolutely, because I think what you're going to have is, you need to have involved the community, and that would be a perfect format for that. Yeah, I, I actually see where you're going. I think it makes a lot of sense.
I think you first need to have that conversation in policy and then come back and ask for a formal recommendation on the board.
I was just asking for a sense of the body, if that would be something they would be opposed to. That's all.
Mr. Carey?
I think this is a, not 100% sure what the bylaws says, but I think there is a process for us to set up the ad hoc committee, so I think what would happen is that the policy committee would recommend that, and it would come back to the board, and it would follow the bylaws policy. I don't exactly know what the steps one through four were, but is that, is that what you're, where you're going, or would you like?
The bylaws allow the policy committee to set up an ad hoc committee. My question is, if it's, if there's a general consensus of the board now that that's okay, then we can save that step without having to come back to the board to do that. We already have the authority to set up the ad hoc committee, but if we're going to approve this as a board goal and move on it, then I think we should move on it rather than, we meet essentially once a month. So if we meet next month and say, hey, we're going to set up an ad hoc committee, you know, do we need to, you know, we have the authority to do that, and I just want to make sure the board's comfortable with the committee doing that.
Yeah, and again, my question wasn't, what I'm uncertain about, and it sounds like you might know, is that I was unfamiliar with, with a committee setting up an ad hoc committee as opposed to that coming back to the board and following procedures that set up in the bylaws.
They, it's within the committee's purview to do that, okay? But if there's strong opposition to that from the board, you know, that, you know, obviously the committee's not going to want to step out and say, hey, we're going to do this, when the board didn't intend for that to happen.
Mr. Carey?
My question, I think, is a simple one, as, as we go into this. Can someone elaborate for me where we feel the current policy, mission statement, and education goals are inadequate, and what they'd like to see changed?
Mrs. Brand?
We actually haven't had a review this since 2004. We are seeing a lot of changes in the school district and what we're teaching, and also with our mandates. Quite frankly, there was something in here and specifically that was talking about basic skills. Whether we want to look at that kind of a goal, and then the subsequent objectives as basic skills, what we're shooting for, but most importantly, it is due review. In fact, when I wrote it, it was to review and make, make changes if people deem necessary, but I think after eight years, we actually, five years, we're supposed to be looking at this. It's been eight. And with the technology that we have, with the way science is changing, and what we feel we have moving forward with core, you know, finish the sentence for me, please, the core curriculum.
Oh, common core.
Right, right, common core, thank you. Those are all fact.
I think it was core facilities.
Yeah, I know. Well, you were doing the same thing I was. But my point was, there are a lot of things that have changed in that timeframe, and I think it would be appropriate to review it to make sure that it's, it's consistent with what we're doing now.
Based on that, I, what, for me, what I think, what I would feel comfortable with is having the policy committee, because the goal is to review and revise if necessary. What might be nice is if the policy committee were to look at it first, and I realize you only meet once a month, you might have to meet, you might have to schedule a special meeting, but I would love to hear from you guys as to, to have you actually sit down, review, review that, and come back with some of the things that you think might need revision, and then how to achieve getting impact from people.
One question I have regarding the tone.
You might come back and say, three of you have looked at it, we don't think we need to revise anything, and we don't think we need to move on.
Two things about that. I think my first thought would be, is that before we three made a step like that, I can't imagine not wanting to reach out to community first. If we're taking the step of doing something that we haven't done for eight years, never mind how long it would take the three of us to make that statement, I know I wouldn't feel comfortable doing so until, I mean, we may pinpoint, here are some areas we think, but trying to get community involved as soon as possible, I, I do think that would be important. I definitely want some direction regarding timing, because our, we're not scheduled to meet until November, there's not a board meeting until the end of that month. So, in terms of direction of timing, I would think we would want to try to pull together a special meeting rather quickly, if not for the sole purpose of taking an initial look and moving on that ad hoc committee.
Okay. And Mr. Fadabean, and then Mr. Lou.
As to timing. These are board goals for the year, are they not?
Yes.
So we adopt a board goal today, but have the whole year to accomplish it?
Correct.
All right.
And Mr. Lou?
Thank you. Yeah, I think Mrs. Cannelli has a really good point, and to sort of piggyback on that, I, I would also think that the whole board should actually look at everything and be able to weigh in and give suggestions of, of things that we think are outdated or need to be revised, and it doesn't have to be fully in-depth, but to say, here are five or six things that I'm feeling the policy committee should look at, and we can, you know, poll it again and see what the full board feels in terms of, you know, do they match up, and which are the priorities? And I think that is important before it gets to the policy committee.
Right. I think that the issue, though, is it's a policy, it's got to, it's, procedurally, I got to get it to policy, that's the problem. Mr. Dwyer?
If, if we use the Board of Education handbook as a model perhaps, while I gave leadership to developing the handbook, it was done through the policy committee, and that wouldn't mean that some board member couldn't say, I'll take the lead on that, or a member of the policy committee take the lead on that and engage other board members in the community and work on the drafts, collect information, and bring it through the policy committee, but I don't think all the work has to be done by the three members. So I would suggest that that might be an approach to do it without leaning too heavily on the agenda that the board policy committee already has.
That's a good suggestion. Mrs. Brand?
I think to answer your question, it's a policy, it is a decision whether we want to pursue this up or down, and then, then it takes its own course. Mr. Convertito made a recommendation. It does mandate in the statutes that it is, does involve the community as to how to decide what we're going to have in there, but, and that's why when you were talking about the ad hoc, I, I think it would work extremely well. So really, all we need to do now is really decide whether we want to pursue this or not, and then the second piece will be, you know, at the policy meeting, how they want to coordinate and, and meet those, those objectives.
I, I would agree with that. Mr. Convertito and then Mrs. Cannelli, or Mrs. Cannelli and then Mr. Convertito.
Just to follow up on Mr. Fadabean's point regarding, it's a goal of the year, yes, but we can't lose sight that the issue Mrs. Brand has raised is, on our microcosm, it's the, it's the issue of the state, you know, so it's looking ahead to the state issue in that we've got a teacher evaluation that's in progress. Well, shouldn't that teacher evaluation involve assessment of what we want to turn out as students? So I think there is a degree of urgency, because while that committee is moving full speed ahead with, you know, looking at this teacher evaluation, well, evaluation based on student growth in what areas? Again, the, the state tests will be out of our hands, but any other measurements, and for all those teachers who do not teach to state tests, you know, there's a, there's an awful lot going on here, and by starting it now, it's, yes, we have a year, but on the other hand, it would be a shame if in June we came back, said, we want to make sure that every student can do X, and meanwhile, it wasn't part of any teacher evaluation. So that's, you know, this is just the big picture, there's a, there's a lot of wheels moving here. So, I don't feel like this is something we have the luxury of leisurely pace for.
Mr. Convertito?
I, I would just move to call the question.
It's non-debatable, is there a second? Second? All in favor of calling the question? Okay. All those in favor of review, revising if necessary the mission statement and the board of education goals and the board of education policy, signified by raising your hand, yes. Passes unanimously. The second one, schedule and attend a board training session that clearly defines board roles and responsibilities of the governing body. As a board, we will agree to stay within the confines of this role and remind one another when a member's request exceeds the limits of our governance responsibility. Governance relates to oversight that defines expectation, grants authority, or verifies performance. I added in wording, such session would take place in December. I tried to find a place where we kind of had a lull. I know it's, I know we're busy with holiday stuff, but in terms of meetings.
You're going to call it a Christmas party?
We can call it a Christmas party, sure. A holiday party, for those who celebrate things other than Christmas. Any discussion? Mrs. Cannelli?
I don't understand the separation, I mean, it was, it's separate because two separate members submitted it, but it would make sense that two and five were a single step, unless?
We can shorten our goals to four and incorporate the two if the, if the board so pleases. Or maybe it's better to have a separate session on just Robert's rules and one on governance. I leave that up to the board. Mr. Carey, and then Mr. Dwyer?
Having attended, I think, three of these types of meetings, I will tell you, it's probably not practical to get through both those topics in one evening. So Robert's rules would easily be an evening in itself, and the CAE training will typically be a, a separate multi-hour session. That's probably why they're separate, would be my guess.
You could do, I don't remember, I don't know if you remember days back where Carl Dickman used to hold his parliamentary procedure classes on a Saturday morning? I mean, they could easily take a whole morning, just rerun through different scenarios and... Mrs. Brand? I'm sorry, Mr. Dwyer, okay, you're good, okay. Anyone else? Mr. Convertito? Oh, and Mr. Fadabean.
My comment would be, as a motion, I think this, I think the first sentence is fine. The second sentence, I just procedurally don't necessarily like. The agreement's going to come, in a sense, through that training session, and the better understanding of the board members of the roles and responsibilities as they perceive and understand them, so I don't know if in a motion you want to agree to something ahead of time that may change during the session. And I'm not sure when it says governance relates to oversight that defines expectations, grants authority, and verifies performance. Those are sort of statements that sort of, in my opinion, don't really belong in the motion in a sense, which is just to, we're going to go to a training session to clarify our roles and better understand our roles. So that's sort of what each one's understanding of, the roles at that time are going to be unified, but to say that stuff ahead of time and limit it, you know, I, I just don't understand what, you know, I wouldn't put that in there. So, we, I think that limits it to some degree and is sort of a necessary precondition to the motion. So I would, I just want to get, if, if it's sense of the by, there, that's sort of an agreement, I would move to delete that language just from the recommended motion.
I, I'd accept that as a friendly amendment, to have it struck.
Okay.
And to answer your question, that is the definition of governance, I don't think it's going to change. it's going to change, but, that's fine, that'll make you more comfortable, I'm more than happy to have that removed.
Okay, thank you.
Therefore, the motion would be just the first sentence.
Correct.
In such session, yes, first and last.
Thank you, and thank you for the friendly amendment, it would procedurally becomes a mess when you're, you can't amend something so many times. Mr. Convertito.
Well, Mr. Fattabine got to half of my questions, so we'll go from there. Can I get General Statutes, Section 10-220, and I thank Board Member Brand for asking, that'd be printed for tonight, although I brought my own copy.
You have the case law books.
How does this motion differ or supersede our duties as outlined under Connecticut state law? I guess that's my question to the, the motioning party, because it seems to me that my responsibilities as a board member and my roles are fairly clearly dictated by Connecticut general statute and state law, and it was something that I actually looked at before I ran for office. So, I want to know why, what differs from this motion than what I'm already committed to do by oath.
Mr. Dwyer.
I would only offer this as a comment. The state law talks about what the boards of education as a collective body are responsible for. I, I think it is probably reasonable to assume that each individual member of a board might approach how to accomplish that role somewhat differently, and to the extent that we approach it wildly differently, then we're not as well-functioning as we should, so I think there's always discussion as to the range of activity and that, that an individual engages in, in order to accomplish the collective responsibility.
I, I think one of the advantages of having nine people on a board is the diversity of it, and I, as much as I may agree or disagree with my fellow board members, I would never tell them what to think, or how to think, or how the board as a whole should react to something, and I really think that this, the underlying tenor of this motion is wink, wink, nod, nod, we're all going to get along, which we're never going to do, okay, and that we expect you to say this or do this when you're in public, and it, it seems to be a motion that wants to control how I react or will not react, and if somebody can make me more comfortable with that, then I'll be more than happy to vote for it, but as it stands right now, I, I don't think I can vote for it.
Mr. Fattabine.
I just sort of responded, since we were sort of thinking the same line, at least half a little bit. One was, the first sentence, it's a training session, we can all learn and better understand-
We go to Cabe training sessions on board roles and responsibilities.
Right, but this is, but this is, right, but this is an enhancement to the prior training sessions, which may have some value, and certainly a majority of the board, or a large portion of the board that rank these seem to believe that to be true. So, I, I proceed as exactly what it says, a training session. I don't think it's by any means saying or dictating what we have to do, and what we have to think, or what we have to say, but it's just a training session so we all can better understand our roles and responsibilities according to the statute. The statute, we have, we're duty-bound to honor the statute, that is our primary obligation and objective. I don't think we can willfully and knowingly not comply with the statute, or I certainly wouldn't. So, I think it's just a better way for all the members to interact in a way that will hopefully be helpful in bringing board unity, at least in the understanding of what we're supposed to be doing and what we, we can do. We're going to have disagreements, but that's inherent in any body, and we just hopefully the disagreements can be at least better understood where we differ and why we differ, and at least appreciate each other's differences without so much difficulty. That's how I perceive it.
I would absolutely second that, I think that's, I think that's actually a really key part of it, is understanding why people feel differently about certain things, and I certainly wouldn't want to subject us to group think, but I would support it for that reason as well, that, that it never hurts to get more training, and sometimes it's a lot easier when you are, you read statutes all the time and understand it, for laypeople, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult for all the different pieces to sink in. Mrs. Brand, and then Mr. Carey. Okay, well, whichever.
So, just to, to synthesize what Mr. Fattabine said, and, and in the simplest terms, I, I agree, I don't think there should be a, a group think, or everyone has to march along the same step, but there has to be a balance where the board recognizes its role to do good, or to negatively impact the district with its behavior, and with what we load onto our staff, and if we have nine different voices continuously giving nine different messages to our team, I've been here long enough to see that negatively impact the 10,000 students we have. So, I think that the important part of this is for us to come to an agreement on how we can function on the goal of moving the district forward for the 10,000 students, and things like Robert's rules, I think, are an important part of that, because how we interact, I think, has to have some structure to it, and I think historically it hasn't, and that's when sometimes things get off the rails, so, not presupposing what the board will agree to in terms of how we move forward, but I think we have to recognize that our actions can have a positive or a negative consequence, and I like to see something like this, get everybody moving in the same direction from the perspective that we're focused on what's best for the district, and to use kind of a, an analogy, instead of talking at each other, talking to each other.
Mrs. Brand.
Mr. Convertito was right, the reason I asked for this is because I agree, I, I felt that what we have as a charge as elected officials is, our duty is very clearly delineated in the statutes. The how we do it is dictated by the town charter on a body of nine, how we get elected, and that we use Robert's rules, and Robert's rules for a body of nine are not the same that are for the RTM. A body of nine has a lot more latitude than Robert's rules for a body of 50, we are a smaller group, but inherent in that clearly is just the tone and the tenor, but that, I think, is something as adults and elected officials, we take personal responsibility for. You can train or not train, my feeling is that this is already very clear what we have to do, Robert's rules dictates our format, the charter tells us how we get elected and how new members get appointed. I actually don't see a need for roles and responsibilities, because I think they're very clearly delineated, and I do think that it is extremely important to have varied views sitting at this table. That, to me, is when you get the best result, but I also think to get there, you can have discourse, but it should be respectful, and that's the only thing I, I think that we just have to remind each other of. What Mr. Carey is talking about in terms of staff, if we ask questions, I expect the superintendent to tell us if any staff member feels unduly burdened. I would not want to do that, and I would expect a response from the superintendent telling us so. That is a very important thing. To be very honest with you, I don't know of anyone that has intentionally tried to overload any particular staff member. Again, we talked about earlier this year in terms of procedure, about getting some material sooner so that we could ask questions sooner, so we weren't asking, you know, some folks on a Monday or a Tuesday for information that we might want to look at tonight, but beyond that, that's more procedural thing, that's something that this group decides. I actually think we're fine where we are.
I'm actually going to take what you said one step farther, because you make good points, but, you're right, we are governed by all that, but here's where I think a training session would be excellent, to all get into a room, discuss the statute, and find out how each of us interprets it and understands it, and then how we move forward, and I, actually, you mentioned the charter, would welcome a discussion on the charter and how that fits into our roles and responsibilities as well, so, I, I think you're 100% right, but I think we seize on that, and this is a training session, of having that discussion, I think you hit the nail right on the head, and actually outline why we should do this, and, and I appreciate that, thank you. Anybody else?
Just for, to be clear, I'm actually not supporting it, I'm, I actually don't think it's necessary, so I, we're coming at it from completely different angles.
Right, but I, I'm taking what you're saying and saying, hey, you know what, that's a good idea, because I think we should have that discussion amongst the nine of us, hey, what is it, what does it mean in subsection blah, 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 you know, and I think I would come to appreciate how Mr. Convertito interprets it versus Mr. Carey, and then how we all come together at the table when we're making our decisions that are best made for the educational movement of the, of the district. Anytime you have an opportunity to get the nine of us in a room to have a discussion where we can all try and, and understand where everyone's coming from, will then help move the, the district forward, and I, I will support this. If anyone wants to move this conversation along and call the question, I'd welcome to hear that. Mr. Convertito.
Before I call the question, I have a, a question. If, if we are all meeting as a board together as a training session, is the meeting FOI-able? Is it executive session? Is it open to the public? What's the format?
I'd have to look, I'd have to look that up and see what qualifies to be board workshop, board training, board whatever, I don't see any reason why. I don't want to give an answer right now, my, my gut just says that this would be a regular meeting, but I don't, I'd have to look up the rules, I don't see any reason why this would be an exec, qualify for an executive session.
It doesn't qualify.
Yeah. Mr. Lou. Why anyone would want to come and be bored out of our mind watching us learn this, I don't know, but you're welcome to.
We, we've thrown around Cabe a lot, is this something we're going to have Cabe involved in?
We can, we can seek a separate trainer, we, we can-
So, I'm just saying, instead of making it open-ended, maybe we should make it specific.
I think we should leave us a little bit of latitude to find out what training sessions are out there, and if we can utilize Cabe, utilize Cabe, if there's somebody who does it better, maybe we utilize them. All right, seeing no more discussion, is the public want to comment on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. In favor, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Saikono, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabine, Mr. Carey, opposed, Mrs. Brand, Mr. Lou, Mr. Convertito, and Mrs. Cannelli, motion carries. Number three. Work with the superintendent to, as to board input into the annual budget, we will also examine and update the rollout and schedule of review time for our annual budget and time for planning the fiscal year 15 budget. As you know, we're already halfway down the pike with fiscal year 14, so it, this would have to be for fiscal year 15. Any discussion? Mr. Convertito.
I checked the board's chair, that was subpoenaed fiscal year 15, that's not what the motion states, unless Mr. Lou accepts a friendly amendment to it.
Well, before I accept that, it-
Oh, sorry, I'm re, you know what, I'm reading off my motion sheet, that was my recommendation.
Well, why can't we get it done for this year? It seems like we've got plenty of time before the-
Well, the superintendent, well, because the schedule has already been set, we work with the fiscal officer to, and then we set the calendar backwards, so she has an end date of when she has to get this to us by, and that's what her whole entire schedule's working off of, so that's how they've been planning their whole budget, but we could certainly do this for the fiscal year, in fact, if you want to do it, you need to do it now so that they know the calendar for the, for the next budget cycle.
I would just, I mean, I know we have that in there, I, I can't imagine, I guess I can't imagine, so I'd love to hear other board members' thoughts about this, in that, yes, we can, we can keep certain dates in there, but why can't we look at examining how much time we have to review? So, I would love to hear what other board members think, if there is a way to, to work with, to get it done for this year, this is what it's all about, right, trying to get it done as soon as possible.
Well, actually, the whole objective is to set goals for us for this year. Mr. Dwyer.
I would agree with Mr. Lou, to the extent that there could be some changes that we implement for this year, and there may be other changes that, quite frankly, because of the timetable at the moment, can't, and, and so if we adopted a motion that said no later then, it would allow us as a board to say, here are two or three or four things we'd like to get done this year that are doable within the timeframe, based on the fact that the process is already underway, so I, I would like a little bit more flexibility than putting the whole thing off to the following year.
Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, since most of our budget is fixed costs, we're not talking about a large flexible number, we're talking about 20% give or take, so I think it's reasonable to have a discussion roughly about that 20% and see what options we might have moving forward, and Doreen, quite frankly, even it could just suffice to give us updates of where they anticipate they're going as it's moving along, just so we have a sense of what direction that other 20% is taking, I think would be very helpful.
All right, well, if someone wants to put some, again, these are just suggestions, and I'm offering up the background and feedback I've gotten from, you know, there's a certain aspect of central office being involved in what we're doing and the impact that we, you know, we're putting on them, we need to be cognizant of that. Mr. Carey.
I'm unclear on what this, is it, what we're being asked to do as a goal here, I, I assume the second sentence leads us towards changing the budget rollout schedule, and I'm kind of looking for some more clarification on what board input into the annual budget is, above and beyond what the existing board input is.
Well, it's not defined, because at this point, I think it's something that the entire board should be involved in, but I think over the, the years that I've been on the board, and even up to recently, we've seen fluctuations in, like last year's, we weren't even included in the rollout at all, something that we said we needed to be included in. This year, we were included. I think a lot of us have found that there has been a short amount of time to review. So, there's a number of issues, some which not all of us may agree with, but I think it's something that we need to examine and look at, because this is the most biggest item of our responsibilities, and I think every year, unfortunately, we're one of the first boards up to bat, and we've always sort of given what, we've got to get it in in time, but, you know, if we're not given, as a board, adequate amount of time to do the kind of looking through this enormous document, then what happens is, we can get cut short, as we've sometimes seen before. I think Mr. Dwyer's comments are, are very good, and I can definitely agree with that, where we try to find some that we can do this year based on an already decided schedule, and some that we can work towards in the future.
Okay. Can I, yeah, but can I ask for clarification, just based on what you said, because I'm, just to fully understand, can you give an example, just so I have an idea where you're going, like, we generally get the budget in January, and we have four meetings on it, are you looking to have five meetings on it? Are you looking to get the budget January 15th and not vote on it until February 15th? Because that's our, there's two pieces to your, to your, to your thing. Input into the annual budget is our budget, the superintendent's budget is his own budget, that's, that's his responsibility. Once it lands on our desk, then it's our annual budget, and that's what we're working on, and that's where we make our amendments and suggestions and whatever, we, we have to remember that, that when it comes to us, that's when it's our budget, so I'm just trying to understand, do you want a month to, to, to review it, once it becomes, once it comes to us, six weeks, four days, like, you want to do it in a week? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Lou, I'm, sorry. Saying a lot of words.
I think the best way to answer it is pretty much the way I already did, is that I, I'm not trying to offer up specific definitions at this point, so to box it in or to say it has to be this way, I think it really needs to be discussed amongst the nine of us. Given that nine people voted it to be the number two idea, maybe we should go around now and hear what other people think are things they're looking for. I'm just saying that I've seen inconsistencies in how we deal with the budget, and there has even been discussion about inter- has even been discussion about interpretations about how that is. What we need to do then is solidify what they are so there isn't any confusion about interpretation, and there are a number of things we could look at.
Okay. Um, and then Mr. Dwyer offered up a friendly amendment that would say no later than our annual budget and time for planning the fiscal year 15. Um, sure, Mr. Dwyer.
I think Mr. Convertito has correctly noted that the, uh, the recommended revised motions sheet that was handed out, um, has a specific wording that is slightly different from the, uh, the way it was in our worksheets.
Right.
And so I would imagine that we have to adopt number three as a amended motion.
Mm-hmm.
And I would add to number three on the second line where it says review time, to say review time no later than for our annual budget to allow for some changes if we might contemplate them.
You mean number five?
Uh, number five goal, which on the revised sheet is listed number three.
Right, yeah. We're working off the re, recommended.
And I would also comment that I think this discussion is not unlike the discussion on the mission statement. How do you say, well, here's the end result of the debate or the discussion when it's not even taken place? And I, I think the, we might end up saying, no, there's no practical or whatever. We may find that there's no changes necessary, um, and so I don't think you can answer where we're going to end up until we at least start the conversation.
Okay.
So I would, I would, uh, move to substitute the wording on number three in the revised sheet for the existing motion.
Okay. And that's a friendly.
With the addition of the words to no later than.
Right.
And ask that to be a friendly amendment.
And that's a friendly, okay. All right. Um, is there any comment from the public? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Um, number four, and again, I'm working off the recommended revised motions, and, and please, I'm just offering these as suggestions. As I said in my email to everybody, I was just going to try and lay out a template, so, you know, these friendly amendments, I think, are working out well. Establish an ad hoc committee to develop a communications plan, social media blog, news media surveys, focus group, community conversations, et cetera, to be reported to the full board at the first board meeting in, I suggest, June. The goal of such plan will be to enhance communications with parents, staff, community leaders, and the general public, engage in a two-way dialogue, and build support for district goals. The method to my madness with June was I was thinking that would give the committee time to put stuff together, work with the members of central office to see what we can do in terms of technology if that's where they decide to go, um, then hopefully vote on it the second meeting in June, and then have the summer to kind of get it up and then be able to roll it out for the school, upcoming school, you know, next school year. That, that was my thought process behind that, but again, I'm just offering that as a suggestion. Is there any discussion? Uh, Mr. Liu and then Mrs. Gerber.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's a good plan to have a communications plan. I always have. I think from the beginning of getting on this board, we were all striving to not only update the, uh, the website, which has been done, but to even perfect it further so that we can have, uh, we can roll out information to the public. And, and, and I actually have the public, you know, aspects of the public involved in the communications, uh, putting out communications as well. My only, uh, bump that I see in this is, you know, when you mentioned a blog, I'm not sure exactly what you mean, and reporting, those two words kind of stuck out because the problem again is that we're a board of nine, and how are we going to write a blog or a report and get it done, obviously? And, and because you can't. I mean, and, and so the idea is that the minutes serve as our blog. That would be a great place to post minutes regularly.
Can I, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah.
Cause I think everyone was right on when they said it before. We're starting to put the cart before the horse, and so probably when the committee meets, they'll say, well, hey, you know what? A blog. I, these are just examples. I, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 so that was just my point.
Yeah.
And, you know, links to Fair TV and things like that, but I, I'm just, you know, I think if, if we try to say, oh, we're going to say something as a whole, we're, it's, it can't, it won't be able to be happened.
Right, right, right. And Mr. Liu, I see yourself volunteering for that committee.
Oh, yeah?
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, um, I mean, I had said that when I first, I talked about, just to blow up, no, blog, not all of the other information that you have here, and I, you know, obviously it's, it's difficult to do anything with nine people, but I think that, um, you know, it could be an online newsletter, it could be something that's sent out, and, you know, it can have information, but it could also have different board members talking about specific subjects. Where, I mean, we can make it clear that it's not, you know, this is not our board policy, but just, I, I think the whole thing is to make the board more accessible to the public, at least that would be one of my goals if we end up going in this direction, is just for people could go there and under, you know, see what our other interests are, why we became board members, just, I don't know. I just think you can never communicate too much, and I think also just having the links to all of the different things. So there's one place where everyone can go and find this information to, you know, whether it's articles in the paper, or just everything there so that people can go to one place and find it very easily and not have to hunt around. So I, I think that it's something that I, I think would be a really good idea.
Thanks. Mrs. Brand.
Um, I think actually pursuing anything that improves communication is worthy. The only thing I would say is that it, moving forward, that, um, whatever group, ad hoc group does this, that they are aware of the limitations that a body of nine has, the statutes, um, our board policy on some things, and then, then we're fine.
Okay. Any public comment? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Unanimously. Uh, number five, strive to improve individual knowledge of Robert's rules and utilize parliament, parliamentary procedure to help our meetings run more smoothly. And again, I editorialized to craft it into a motion. Any discussion? Pop, uh, Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, actually, I believe the town clerk can provide this as well for us if we, we, she did one earlier, I think it was last year.
Yes.
And actually provides a notice to all chairs also, I think, annually about this. So, you know, we have ample opportunity, um, and we can actually set, I'm sure, a separate date if we want a training session.
Great. Any comments from the public? All in favor? Mr. Fattabene, are you in favor? Okay, 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 yeah. No, let's take a break. Um, thank you, that, that passes. Now we just have to vote on, do we have to vote on the, back to the? No, we're all set. We did, cause we, oh, you, we divided them. Yes, thank you. Um, I'm just going to ask that we take a five-minute recess since we've got some more stuff to cover on here. Um. Next item is approval of policy six, four, one, seven, instruction, student internet use. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve policy number six, four, one, seven, instruction, student internet use. Uh, as you know, we had a first read at our last meeting, and, um, I need someone to move the question and then second it, and then I'll.
Make a motion.
That the Board of Education approve policy six, four, one, seven, instruction, student internet use. Moved by Mrs. Cannelli, seconded by Mr., Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Cannelli, you want to open up discussion?
Um.
Not really.
Yes, no. At this point, I'd be more comfortable just seeing what board questions were, if that's all right.
Okay, excellent. Anybody have any commentary or questions? Mr. Fattabene.
Um, as you know, uh, the policy that was brought forward brought some interest from an outside group. The American Civil Liberties Union had drafted a letter, I guess, and sent it to, uh, the board members, uh, for which I received a copy. And the, um, American Civil Liberties Union's position is that they appear to believe that our policy as drafted, uh, may lead to violations of the Fourth Amendment, which relates to um.
Search and seizure.
Search and seizure primarily. Um, I actually talked to Mr. McGuire, Attorney McGuire, at the American Civil Liberties Union, and he was, um, very cordial, and was willing to discuss with me some of their concerns. The gist that I got out of that discussion was, in essence, what his letter indicated was that their concern is primarily related to the, um, the attribution in the policy which attributes the personally-owned equipment into district technology resources and the risk of one's privacy that that may violate. So with that said, I, um, believe there might be some issues with the policy as drafted. And one would, in drafting policy, one should obviously have the intent to make it as free of constitutional violations as possible. Um. I would, I, yeah, that's very wise. And, um, so I would suggest, and I think I would be, uh, more comfortable if, if, to remand it back to the policy committee to have a further discussion, maybe tweak it to some extent, if we can get some consensus among the policy committee on how to modify the language to least likely have a constitutional issue. Uh, and that's the way I would probably approach it. I'm not sure you're going to be able to address all of the American Civil Liberties Union's concerns, or at least do what they may want or what they're advocating, but there may be some areas that we could be a little more cautious into not having a, um, very contested policy that may not hold up to some constitutional, um, inquiry. Um, and that may be better in the long run, I think, is that maybe make a stronger policy that would avoid some of those issues.
You're making a motion to send it back to policy? Or are you just, just commenting at this point?
Um, I will, I, I see a hand up, so I would rather, before I make a motion, defer to hear others' comments and see what they believe too.
Okay, I see. Mrs. Cannelli and then Mr. Carey.
Um, two points. First, for purposes of the public, since obviously they're not privy to the letter, if you look on page two, the, I also spoke with, uh, Mr. McGuire with the ACLU, just to clarify exactly what the concern was, not to represent the interest of the board, but just to get more information. On page two of what the motion is to, um, what the motion is before the board, if you look five lines down on the right from the top, the sentence beginning with digital storage and electronic devices used for school purposes, whether district or personally-owned, will be treated as district technology resources. Therefore, all students must be aware that they should not have any expectation of personal privacy in the use of these resources. The ACLU as it stands, they perfectly understand the, the need, um, for such a policy. There was no objection to the, what they recognized was undoubtedly the intent of the board. It was those two sentences, to come back to Mr. Fattabene's point, that they thought would be in violation of the Fourth Amendment. Um, and before we go to the point of a motion, I would certainly like to hear from Karen Parks, you know, in terms of, cause we did, I mean, immediately we wanted to go back to CAPE and get additional guidance in terms of, you know, where this language is coming from, who has or has not approved, seen, vetted this language. Um, so I would, at this point, if it's all right, I'd like to hear from, uh, Ms. Parks and get more feedback on that.
Mrs. Parks.
Okay. Um, actually, when the, the language in this policy was taken from several other districts who have a policy, and the language was, much of the language was taken from CAPE originally. And however, there's a caveat. Um, the, Mr. Dwyer, I think you sent out several of the cases that, um, support, uh, search and seizure of, of students using the internet. The difference apparently, according to CAPE, is that, um, whether a student is using their personal device, these, all of these cases are related to districts where students are prohibited from having their personal device in school. In our policy, in hopes to prepare for bring your own device to school, uh, we wanted to incorporate language, uh, for personally-owned devices. And so CAPE has no policy for that currently because there's been no court test, there's been no test case in Connecticut. Um, so therefore, they haven't written a policy. They have written guidelines that do have similar language, and so, uh, in constructing the policy, we did use several different districts' policies, but they have not, there has been no court case in Connecticut where a student has used their own device and it's been searched. And, uh, however, I would say that I don't think we've ever violated, um, we, I don't think we've ever gone overboard with search and seizure for students. So in terms of CAPE's endorsement, um, they can't really say, yes, we endorse this because we don't have a policy yet, but they are waiting for someone to have a policy.
Until we get to be the test case. I had Mr. Carey, Mr. Convertito, Mr. Dwyer, and then Mrs. Brand. And I better write that down.
I, I think generally speaking, uh, if Mr. Fattabene wants to make a motion, remand this to the policy committee, I'd be happy to second it, because I think we're going to do some more work on it. Couple of things, it, it seems, and this isn't necessarily a bad thing, that our, um, roadmap for use of technology and where we're taking the district is outstripping the policymakers at the public school CAPE groups, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. Looking at this and reading the letter we got from the ACLU attorney, um, who ironically chose to contact the newspaper two weeks before us, I thought that was a bit odd, but, um, I'm glad that a couple of members spoke to the attorney. It, it seems to me this is going to have to be hashed out in the language. I, I'm assuming that our intent here is that if we're bringing your own device, BYOD is the big technological buzz, if we're having students bring electronic book readers and iPads and phones and computing devices that exceed the computing power of the computers in our libraries at this point, was there eight to nine years old, um, and they're going to be accessing our wireless network, that what we want to do is make sure that we have rules to protect the confidentiality, the integrity, the availability of the data and of the network. Then the district has, and this board has additional burden of ensuring that the content being viewed by different age groups is appropriate through the set of law, uh, and we layer on to that, making sure the interactions on our network are, uh, not deemed bullying or getting into other areas of policy that we have to deal with. So, the challenge here, I think, is with the specific sentence that was a question, I, I personally have a problem with people perceive the board's intent as, yes, we can go into any student's home and grab that computer over there in the corner and we have access to that because they used it for their homework. Now, that's, that's not the intent. I, I, I'm assuming the intent of what our, our policy committee tried to put together was devices that are in our network or devices that are on school grounds, just like anything else that's on school grounds. Um, and if we can rework our wording around that in a way that's acceptable, and I think working through our attorneys, we're, we're going to be breaking a little ground here, but we have this need to make sure that our policy's up to date for internet filtering for the protection of our students from that perspective. I think it's a really good idea that we're venturing out into letting our students bring the devices, but that's kind of a trade-off that we have to make. If one of those devices is being used to degrade the network, to access or hack someone else's information, to try to gain access to confidential administrative information, our team has to have the ability to access that device and, and, and stop that from happening, and there has to be rules around that. So we're going to have to find a balance between privacy, um, which I don't think would exceed the privacy that we offer students in their lockers or in any other area of, of policy. It's just new technology, so it makes it a little more challenging. So I, I think that if we remand this to the policy committee, that we could probably find a fair balance here, um, working with our attorney and the outside groups that have concerns to, uh, to come up with something that's, uh, a reasonable and more fit to the intent that we're looking to.
Thank you. Mrs. Parks, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that, um, I, I appreciate with, what Mr. Carey said, and additionally, the, the difficulty for us is that many of the devices are cellular and not on our own internet. So be, so we have a very filtered internet and can control that, but the, an, an additional concern we have. have is a student bringing in a 3G or 4G electronic device has access way beyond our filtered internet, and so we also have to have some way to control that and to ensure that students aren't conducting behaviors inappropriate.
And to your point, that stuff is not coming through your network, there have to be rules and they have to be written rules and they have to, there has to be consequences, just like any other policy or rule.
Thank you. Mr. Convertito.
First of all, let me point out, much to his credit that Mr. Fadabean actually picked this up in policy committee and raised the issue. So my inclination, there are, while I didn't call the ACLU, because as a lawyer, I don't believe in calling the opposing counsel until I know that I have to. I did talk to some other constitutional lawyers, and there are ways around this. There are waivers, much the same way we did with the breathalyzer issue and so forth, that if you want to use this, you can use this. As far as people bringing in, you know, 4G or 3G devices and not using school resources, okay, technology resources, that would be excluded from this policy anyhow, okay? Because they wouldn't be using our technology resources at all, they'd be using, you know, some outside network. So those wouldn't be subject to search and seizure the way this policy's written, okay? And it seems to me that if we want to...
Yes, they are.
I disagree with that.
Only if they access district resources.
Nope.
Maybe it would be a good time to get the motion to send it to policy.
So I would, I would make the motion to recommit this.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fadabean. Any discussion on moving it to?
One quick comment.
On the, moving it to policy? The discussions to, I'm sorry, I'm looking for comments on moving it to policy. Mr. Dwyer and then Mrs. Brand.
I'm in favor of remanding it to policy with the hope that while the policy may be good, that administrative regulations governing the process would be perhaps a helpful solution to the discussion we're having.
Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, actually, I sent an email out. In fact, Cooperative Education Services Board had this as a topic of discussion, Esther Bobwick, actually, you've probably already spoken with her regarding this. But I had asked whether legal opinion and regs, because I think the policy in this case might have gotten very specific. But where I think the danger lies is where we draw the line, and I think that may actually be able to be spelled out in the regs and actually really be very helpful here. That might not be the solution, but I think that might be the direction you might want to take, and absolutely support it going to subcommittee. Thank you.
Any comment from the public? All in favor of returning this policy to, returning this policy to the policy committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Voting in favor, Mr. Convertito, Mr. Lou, Ms. Saikono, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fadabean, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand, opposed. Mrs. Cannelli and Mrs. Gerber, motion carries. And I am going to take off item B under new business, because the student internet use sort of goes hand in hand, so we'll hold off the first reading of that until you straighten out the other one. So that brings us to new business, item A, discussion on proposed amendments to the racial imbalance plan.
All right. We set the table on this one, you have a large enclosure on it, wasn't sure how much background everybody had on it, so if it's overkill, I apologize for that. So you know that over the summer, we received a letter from the Commissioner of Education telling us that we needed to come up with a better plan to remedy the racial imbalance at McKinley. There is a copy of the actual statute on there for the lawyer types who like to actually read the whole statute. But basically, the rule is that the racial composition at McKinley of non-white students needs to be within 25 percentage points of the district average at the same grade level. In the prior year, the number was just under 26 percentage points, and it went up to just under 27 percentage points. So we're fairly close, but we're still out of compliance with the law, and therefore the state board asked us to review this. The original letter said, "Come back in September with your plan." And I asked that we be given some additional time, because our plan is the board's plan, and I would need to bring it back to the board, and we would need to have at least two meetings on it, and so we got a little bit of a stay. So I have this on for discussion tonight and a possible vote at the November meeting. That's the game plan. So this is not a voting item. If you recall, we had amended our plan in 2011, part of which was to add the preschool program at Burr School, and that allows students who went to kindergarten at Burr to remain there. It was part of an overall revision of our pre-K program. And so far, so good on that in terms of students staying at Burr and helping with our racial balance. But that hasn't fully had a chance to work yet, so that's still a work in progress. So what I thought and what we decided was that we would try to come up with a modest proposal that would help us get there, that the State Board of Education would go along with, rather than be forced into a more radical solution that nobody wants to go towards, because the state board is really pushing on this. So before even bringing this forward to the state board, I sent this letter to the Commissioner, and the chair and I went up and met with the Commissioner and a couple of staff members to say, "Look, we don't want to bring this back to our board if this thing's going to be dead on arrival with the state board. So will you guys support this?" The lawyer and the Commissioner. Went up there, and they agreed that we have a modest discrepancy, does not require a major response. They couldn't vouch for the state board, but they basically said that they would support this. I said, "All right, with that assurance, I'd bring it back to you, see if you wanted to endorse it, and then we would send it up to them in, you know, after the November meeting. Then it would go on the State Board of Education agenda. The chair and I would have to go to that meeting, and we hope that they would then, they would then pass it." So that's the procedure. This actually has to go through the whole State Board of Education. I know this sounds a little contradictory to the state getting out of the hair of high performing districts, but it is what it is. So the nut of the thing here is that we also want to try to do something that would add value educationally and not just move kids around. And I also know that moving kids around here in an involuntary basis is not a place we all want to go. So the gist of the proposal is to add a preschool program, similar to the one that's at Burr, but to add it at Dwight. Dwight is a school that, quite frankly, is looking for kids, the school that has the room, the school, the community is interested, and it would be the same arrangement, that if a student went to Dwight for the three and four-year-old program, if they wished to stay, even though that wasn't their neighborhood school, they'd be allowed to stay, but it would be voluntary. With the hope that, you know, you go to school for a couple of years, as has happened at Burr, they get welcomed by the community, they feel comfortable there, they've made friends, and they would stay. Would still be a mix of students, it wouldn't all be, you know, students from McKinley, it'd be open to the whole school district, but obviously, the goal here is to, is to improve the racial balance at McKinley. The other piece we started to look at, now that we've got several years of data, is the opt-in, opt-out. It's been the board's policy since before I came, that part of the strategy was to allow families to opt-in or opt-out of McKinley. And basically, the net effect of that has been, that opt-out has been basically neutral. The mix of families that have opted out of McKinley is roughly the same racial proportion as McKinley, therefore, it is of no value in this. Opting in, however, has had a positive effect, and that is to say that a larger percentage of white families have opted into McKinley than are presently, you know, in. We can't discriminate who opts in and who opts out, you know, words, you can't say, you know, you can't do it that way. But if you have the opportunity there, if you're attracting families in from other schools, then it generally has been the case that the opt-in is working, and so we're saying that we need to close off opt-out. It's not helping, and it's cost us money, because then we have to transport the kids once they opt out, they stay out. And the final piece is that, I think I mentioned this actually, one of the last meetings of the task force, I think Jennifer's actually on the task force, that the task force has really moved on to community conversation, diversity in general, they've had some very successful events, but that this is a huge issue, and this really needs to be board-driven and really needs to be a board decision, and therefore, that the mission of that task force has changed, and that really, this should just be a board conversation. So that's the overview of it, and I think that this plan will help us. It will not get us down to where McKinley is at the average of the rest of the district, but I think it will get us into compliance and buy us a couple of years at the state. And so that's, that's the game plan, and you have all the paperwork, so I guess I'll just open it up to discussion.
Mrs. Cannelli.
Two quick questions. Will this involve any cost in terms of the facilities at Dwight to be able to have a preschool class?
There, there may be some equipment type of things that we would need to get, appropriate furniture and so forth. If the board's inclined to do this, then I would crunch some numbers and come back with the cost impact. But I would say that, you know, that would be maybe a one-time expense that would be modest and wouldn't be a barrier to this. We would invoke our model of a mixed groupings of students throughout the district's preschools and collect tuition from some families, based on the sliding scale, if the board approved that tuition. That would offset some of the costs of this, but not all the costs. I think net-net on the whole deal is what you're going to end up absorbing as a board to enact this will be the transportation costs associated with kids going out to Dwight. And we can get a better estimate on that, but that's probably the net of what it's going to end up costing.
And then the second part, because with Burr, it also involves siblings. If a preschooler opted to enroll in the kindergarten, their siblings had the opportunity to transfer in as well, so that the family's all in one school, would that be here as well?
Right, yes. It would be the same rules, and that actually would help us.
Right.
Of course, you'd get, you know, more than one child for your money. Right.
Mr. Convertito.
How much room do you anticipate being at Dwight?
How much?
Space do you anticipate being at Dwight? As far, I mean, if you're...
Well, we need one classroom.
So this is, you're talking about 22 students?
Well, it's one classroom, but they're, they're half three-year-olds, half four-year-olds, and they're morning and afternoon, so we use one classroom, one teacher, one para. Thirty-six would be eighteen and eighteen are the targets. Eighteen morning, eighteen afternoon.
And how many empty classrooms are at Dwight at this point in time, or unutilized classrooms?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but do we know?
Define empty, because they're utilized.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, you know, they're all being utilized, it's a matter of repurposing one.
So if they're all being utilized, what gets displaced by putting a preschool there?
Do you know, come on up, and the principal's here. There it goes. Right. Right, if you want to.
To the benefit of having a couple of classrooms that don't have full-size homerooms, if you will, is allows flexibility up at Dwight to put the MST and the LAS together in a room and have small group instruction occurring there. Math-science teacher, sorry, and language art specialist, pardon me. They were able to set up a netbook lab in half of the space of a classroom. So there's some elbow room that's being utilized for additional support services that could easily be collapsed into another classroom to support the preschool.
And do we have a projected rollout two and three years down, assuming? First of all, if you're going to open up a preschool, is that just going to be the preschool kids in the McKinley district?
No.
So it'll be around the district?
Correct.
So we could get, and please excuse me, if I'm politically incorrect here, I loathe having this conversation, because it seems to be based totally on someone's ethnicity. You could get 22 Caucasians, okay, that sign up for this and make the problem worse.
You could. Our experience at Burr is that's not the case, that we have been successful, in fact, I think we have some unmet demand in terms of families at, in McKinley District and other parts of the school district, in the minority community for preschools. So we've had a pretty good balance, and honest, taking the applications in, so do you want to comment on that a little?
Yeah, we have not had issue of diversifying Burr. We've had a nice balance of applications, we've been able to balance a classroom up at Burr, and remember, we're also placing students at the early childhood center, so that has not been an issue. And we have a handful of students this year on a wait list right now.
I would caution you in use of the term balance, because it makes it sound like we're being selective. My understanding is this is strictly a lottery system?
Right.
Based on family household income.
Right. Yeah, we, and we haven't fleshed out every detail around this, because we want to make sure we're heading down the right path here, because there's, we may be able to offer, you know, certain parts of town, Dwight and other parts Burr, so that we can minimize the transportation and so on and so forth. But still, you know, anybody can apply. We also have slots that are free slots for kids who are below certain income and reduced slots, and then full slots. So we can do it that way.
But that doesn't affect their admission, it only affects what they will pay, correct?
Correct.
So we don't offer preschool based on financial need or necessity. We offer it to everybody, but those who can't pay, we subsidize. It's my understanding of the program.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, but we've also, we make some revenue, we have a revenue assumption in here, and so we have to have a mix to make that happen.
Can I, can I ask a point of clarification on that? So do you take a certain number of students from a particular income level, or you can't do that? How does, how does your selection process work? I guess that's the question.
It's an open application process. It's open, although it's technically open for three months, it's really a rolling application process. We have applications that come in, even, even yesterday, I had two applications land in my inbox. So as long as they're open slots, we place them. So we place all students, as many students as we can, we prioritize those students who qualify for free preschool. But at, to this date, for the last three years, we've been able to place all but maybe three or four kids who have asked to be placed, whether they are free, reduced, or full. So we have not gotten to a point where we have had to turn a family away. Up until, at the end of August, we were full, and we had applications that came in thereafter, and hence, they're on a wait list.
Gotcha.
I just needed a point of clarification.
Okay. Mr. Fadabean? Go ahead.
Did I understand, did you just say that this program's open to all students in Fairfield?
Yes.
Or all, it is? Then I guess I don't understand, this statement in the letter, in the last paragraph on the first page, "We propose to add another preschool program for McKinley families at Dwight." What does that mean?
Right.
In the last sentence, I mean, last paragraph, the first sentence of the letter of September 21st, making a proposal to the...
Correct, but it also, but it, but it's not just for McKinley families.
Well, that's, in my opinion, a little misleading. I mean, that's what I, that's my confusion.
Right.
The state, this letter was sent to the Commissioner of Education. He reads, "Therefore, we propose to add another preschool program for McKinley families at Dwight Elementary School."
Right, but we had a discussion with him about it, there's no confusion.
There definitely wasn't a confusion when we talked to him.
I don't know what he's going to remember or not remember, but he's got this letter. It confused me.
That's not how it works in practice, and that's not what we're planning to do. So we can clear that up.
Okay. Okay. Mrs. Brandt?
Didn't we have McKinley families have the opportunity to opt-out into Dwight? I thought Dwight was none, not preschool, just into the school proper, wasn't that one of the sites we actually had as an option? We changed our process the last two years. Three years ago, we identified the exact schools with spaces and only limited applications for those schools and grades. Because enrollment fluctuates over the summer, we decided to just have parents apply for opt-out at McKinley and prioritize one, two, and three, what schools they would prefer. I then reviewed applications and called each family individually based on June numbers, which are closer to being correct, and some parents I put on hold until August because their numbers were so close on add or subtract of a section, and we worked through their top three choices. And Dwight, what has been in the past part of, one of those schools that parents have been able to go, depending on their option and depending on room, is one of the rules of thumb we utilize is that we would never opt a family into a school that would cause the addition of a section, hence an FTE addition.
But it was one of the schools-
Has been in the past, yes.
Yeah, okay. And my other question is, how long, I actually saw it's 2007, but I actually thought we started with the racial imbalance issue, I think as far back as 2005?
It goes back.
Yeah, I think it's been quite an ongoing saga. The only other thing I would ask is if we're talking about this at preschool and if we have, are pretty well below capacity for Dwight, whether or not if a child is in a preschool, if they have a sibling, if we would open it up to the sibling as well to have a choice to go into Dwight as well?
Right, we do.
But I mean for the older student. I don't mean for the preschooler, so it, say if we-
We do.
Do.
Okay, is that included in this letter? We're talking about the preschool, but I don't know that we're making clear that if a family has a preschool or they send the preschooler there, that they also have the choice then, because I, any family's going to want to have their children at one site.
That's our practice currently, as soon as your child is accepted into the preschool program at Burr, the whole family can come. And we have families that take us up on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Convertito, let me go to Mr. Carey and then Mr. Convertito.
Just a real brief question. I see that we're going to be ending the opt-out at McKinley, I understand why and can support that. My one question is kind of a devil's in the details, I'm not sure if you considered it yet. For the families that have opted out of McKinley, will siblings be able to follow? Because now we have a situation where they made a decision.
Right, no, they're all grandfathered in.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't end that program. It's going to be, there'll be a long tail on it.
Just for the siblings?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Convertito.
Just for, I understand, we're not voting on this now, but if, in the meantime, if you could get at least me the following information, I would find it extremely helpful. I'd like to see a five-year rollout, assuming 22 kids per year, what that would do to the number of sections at Dwight, assuming that the population growth, or the population stays at 278 without this preschool, because that shows me that this school will grow by a population of roughly 120 students over five years on a five-year rollout period, and what the facility is capable of handling, what the principal is comfortable with, what that facility will handle. I certainly don't want to go over a five-year period putting 120 kids in a school and then finding out that the school's not capable of handling it, it is one of our older schools. So I'd like to see the five-year rollout on that.
Sure, I don't think we're going to get to those numbers.
Well, just on an assumption with the current numbers, over, you know, with 22 kids, you know, entering this year and assuming 80% of, I don't know what, how many people stay at Burr?
Oh, it's not like-
I mean, I don't know what percentage stay at Burr, but if we could use Burr as a model on the rollout, I just want to see, I just don't want to get into a situation where now we have a school that we're loading beyond what it's-
Right, I understand the point of the question. I think the last sentence on the first page is our projection, optimistic projection would be, you know, 10 over two years, so five per year additional staying.
Is that historically what's been happening at Burr?
And that's been about the Burr range.
Okay.
So that's our target, I mean, you just, you know, as much, yeah.
If we could just see that rollout, it would just make it just simpler for me.
Right.
Thanks.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. - oh, sure, Mr. Lou.
Thank you. So in order for this to be successful, how much compliance, I mean, do we have to do?
Well, the tactical absolute minimum is we have to get to under the 25 percentage point differential, which we're two percentage points away from, which translates to about 10 kids. But that's the absolute minimum. The state wants you down, way down from there. So if we come in at 24.5%, they're not going to say, "All right, Fairfield's off the radar, we're not going to see them again." They could very well come back and say, "That's all well and good. If you look at the statute, you're impending racial imbalance when you're 15 percentage points away." And they have said to some districts, "Don't come back with a plan that gets us to 23, give us a plan that gets to 15." So we have to get under 25, but even there, they could push us to go even further. So the closer we can get to 15, the less chance that they'll be on our backs.
And so when we move the kids, when we did the program with Burr, we got closer, but we still, and is that why we're still dealing with this? Or did we get it, we came within range and then it just changed again?
Yeah, because there's also another factor in this, and that is, yes, we had families from Burr stay, so that helped.
Right.
Didn't help enough. Also, as I pointed out to them at the meeting, and one of the reasons that I think they're willing to work with us on this, this is only year one for Burr, really. We doubled the number of kids, but we put three-year-olds in, so we've got another year of Burr to go before that's fully implemented. But also, the population of McKinley could be changing. You know, if the population of McKinley itself, independent of everything else, has more non-white students, then you're fighting upstream. You know, we might have to have two or three kids go just to fight the normal increase of non-white students at McKinley. So there's, you know, there's several moving parts to this, and so being this close to the line, you'd like to get yourself, you know, sufficiently under that we're off the radar screen. That's how it is. I mean, it's a very, very difficult issue, and trying to do this in a way that makes some educational sense, has the minimal impact on the system, and is beneficial, as beneficial as it can be.
So just one last thing, I guess, so then, basically, for as long as we've been dealing with this, we've really always been on the radar. We haven't really been able to deal with it.
It's been-
I mean, we've come close, but I'm just saying, but really, it's just still there. It just keeps nagging away at us.
Yeah, in 2005, we were at about 22 percentage points. In '06, we went over the magic number.
Okay.
Spiked up to over 28 percentage points, and it's been bouncing around. It's on the, it's on the Commissioner's memo. 2006, it was 28.74, then it was 27.40, then we got really close, 25.45.
And the way we've been getting these numbers is by moving kids around, but-
It's all been voluntary.
Right, voluntarily moving kids around.
Exactly, right. And so it bounces up or down, and so it's all been with a very narrow band.
Right.
Yes.
I guess the question that begs is, like, are we, you know, just continuing to do the same thing that's not really getting us completely anywhere? I know it's a very, very difficult issue, but I'm just wondering if, you know, it's, we're not, maybe we should be reevaluating how we look at this, and that's just a rhetorical question.
Then I won't answer it.
Because it starts with the capital R-word.
Okay. There's no action on this, so.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brandt?
Yeah, actually, just when we do go to vote on it, if we could have the educational rationales, because you were mentioning what's best educationally, I think it would be helpful so that we can appreciate that, because that's actually what's most important.
Next item is C, as I said, we're going to hold off on B because we didn't pass the other policy. Approval of the plans and specifications for the Fairfield Ward High School Roof Replacement Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the plans and specifications for the Ward High School Roof Replacement Project, TMP-051-BWQX. Moved by Mrs. Cannelli, seconded by Mr. Dwyer. You have an enclosure in your packet. I do want to preface this by saying, the typical procedure is that these ed specs would come to the Board and then they would go before the town bodies for approval. However, the town bodies decided after the fact to go to the state for funding. So really, what we're doing tonight is just procedural, we have to approve these plans as they are in order to get state funding, and it's nothing that we did wrong as a Board, it's just the town decided after the fact to seek a waiver and then go for state reimbursement. So we're sort of now, after the fact, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. So please feel free to ask questions, but there's nothing really that we can change on these. It's already up with the state. Mrs. Brandt?
With that, I would move the question.
Okay. Is there a second? All right, all in favor of calling the question? Mrs. Cannelli. It's unanimous, okay. All in favor of approving the ed specs passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Public comment, rules of which are stated on our agenda. Would anyone like to address the Board at this time? Thank you. Does anybody have anything for open board comment?
I don't sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, please, please come up to the microphone. Got to be loud with this crew. Please state your name and address for the record.
Nancy Haverly.
Hold on, the mic's not on.
Nancy Haverly.
Nope, you can use this mic right here if you want.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, there you go.
Nancy Haverly, parent, Fairfield.
Your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, 30 Duck Farm Road, Fairfield. I'm wondering, I hear that there's a district-wide policy in the elementary schools, and it's sort of a discipline, district-wide policy for take a break chair, and I'm wondering if that is something, I'm kind of surprised by it, to tell you the truth, and I'm wondering, is that really a policy that the Board endorses and what that really entails?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any open board comment? Mrs. Cannelli?
I don't know if anybody has seen this around town, but I certainly wanted to make sure Dr. Tittle had a copy of this. This is the Fairfield Living Magazine, which highlights the accomplishments of 10 Fairfield students and specifically five from the public schools, three from Ludlow and two from Ward. And I just think it's nice to be able to get some public recognition of the tremendous work that our students do, and it's just fascinating reading about what some of our students are up to, very, very diverse in their talents that brought them to the attention and brought them through the selection process, and so it just, it's September, October issue, if anybody wants to go out and take a look, but again, it's just a really fabulous job by some of our students.
Thank you, great. Thank you, all entertain a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry.
There are a couple of things. One that is, remind everyone that it is anti-bullying month, and you will see notices around town about the actual anti-suicide walk. I forget the exact term, I think it's walk in the dark. I apologize, I can't remember the exact terminology. The other thing is, we have had in the district a number of issues with PCBs, Fairfield-Ludlow High School, Mill Hill parents have made a request, we have it also with the letter that we just got with a lot of information, which quite frankly, I confess, I saw part of the asbestos and I saw part of the lead, but I didn't actually see the PCB results for Riverfield School. With that in mind, I know that there is a plan somewhere about how we're going to approach all of these, the sooner the better, and also if we could have the protocols for EPA on the district website, I think that would be very helpful. And since some of these issues are clearly taking place in elementary schools, I would want and hope that the schools are encouraging frequent handwashing, because it is one of the major ways you can at least limit some contact. Two other things, a while back, Dr. Tittle mentioned the significant impact that Aon and the pension would have, you know, if possible, I would like to see us have some presentation so we can fully appreciate that.
It's coming.
Oh, great, thank you.
December meeting.
Wonderful. The other thing is, I would really like a presentation on the CMTs, the CAP, and the SATs. I know they've been a great topic, but I think as a Board, we should really be discussing that. Thank you.
Anybody else before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, moved by Mr. Convertito, seconded by Mr. Lou, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Okay.[1766.99]